Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you. I'm going to call the meeting of the Harrisonville Board of Aldermen to order. If you would rise and recite the pledge with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Yes, ma'am. Alderman Davidson.
Present.
Alderman Franklin.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Mills.
Present.
Alderman Zerring.
Present.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Present.
Alderman Reese.
Present.
Alderman Milner is excused. Mayor Bowman.
President, thank you. We do have a quorum. We do have a ceremonial matter this evening. I have a proclamation to make. We will see that Love the Square, Amanda Stites, gets this sent to her. She couldn't be with us this evening, but I would like to read the proclamation. It is for Small Business Saturday 2021, and it reads, "Whereas the government of Harrisonville, Missouri celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. And whereas, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 30.7 million small businesses in the United States, which represent 99.7% of all firms with paid employees in the United States and are responsible for 64.9% of net new jobs created from 2000 to 2018. And whereas, 96% of consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday agree that shopping at small, independently owned businesses supports their commitment to making purchases that have a positive social, economic, and environmental impact. And 97% of consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday agree that small businesses are essential to their community. And whereas Harrisonville, Missouri supports our local businesses that creates jobs, boosts our local economy, and preserves our communities. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed this Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Judy Bowman, Mayor of Harrisonville, Missouri, do hereby proclaim November 27, 2021, as Small Business Saturday and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small business and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year." This is the proclamation, and I'm going to ask the city clerk to get that to Amanda Stites. There you go. Thank you. Uh, thank you. We have a lot of small businesses in Harrisonville now that you can shop at on the 27th of November, so I would encourage you to do so. All right, moving on to the agenda items then. Public participation. Did we have any agenda request forms turned in?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Moving on. Approval of the minutes. The first item, you've had these minutes in your packet. The Board of Aldermen, the regular meeting for October 18, 2021.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion from Alderman Dorhoff with a second from Alderman Zerring, all in favor of the approval of those minutes?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Those minutes stand approved as printed. The Board of Aldermen meeting for the work session, October 18, 2021.
I make a motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion from Alderman Franklin with a second from Alderman Davidson, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Those minutes also stand approved as printed. The minutes from the Board of Aldermen work session, November 1, 2021.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion from Alderman Zerring with a second from Alderman Turner, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. The minutes of the Board of Aldermen work session stand approved as printed. Moving on to the minutes of the executive session from November 1. You had those in a sealed envelope at your desk, and I ask you to review those and then return them to the city clerk. I would entertain a motion for their approval.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion from Alderman Dorhoff with a second from Alderman Franklin to approve the minutes of the executive session. May I have a roll call on that, please?
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Zerring.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Milner is excused.
Thank you. Moving on to the agenda items. The first is Christmas on the Square, the 2021 event permit. Good evening, Chief Hofer.
Good evening, members of the board. Before you tonight is the annual Love the Square event permit application. You have Christmas on the Square and Mayor's Christmas tree lighting celebration. We're requesting closing the square entirely at 1:00 p.m. on December 4 until about 7:00 p.m. at the conclusion of the event. It's a little bit earlier than what they've closed it in years past. They just wanted a little more time for setup. This has not been a problem in the past, and we have had no problems with this event in years past, and we are recommending approval. Any questions?
Does the board have any questions of Chief Hofer? If not, I would entertain a motion, uh, mention, a motion for the approval of Christmas on the Square.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
The motion is from Alderman Davidson with a second from Alderman Turner, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. That event permit is approved. Moving on to Council Bill 87.
Council Bill 87 is an ordinance of the Harrisonville Board of Aldermen adopting an operating budget for the City of Harrisonville, Missouri for the fiscal year January 1, 2022 through December 31, 2022, First Attorney Council, 087.
Mr. Ratliff is going to approach the podium, and then we'll introduce this ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Aldermen. You have tonight the first reading of the budget for 2022. The tough decisions that you all had to make this past year are going to be beneficial for this next year. If you remember, we kicked off the swap meetings with the different department heads coming in and going over the strengths, the weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. You had 14 nights of that and heard from 21 departments and divisions within those departments. A lot of information, a lot of opportunity for that discussion with the department heads, as well as meeting a lot of different members and different mid-management within the city and the organization. August mid-year amendments was a conformity of the board's priorities, and you moved forward with those amendments. September 2022, the forecast and the draft budget was delivered. On the October, the work sessions and up to November 1 with the wrap-up sessions that were a part of that. From that time to this time, the mayor nor I received any additional questions or comments from any of the board members. So tonight, the budget that's being presented to you is $53,050,724 for the overall complete budget. Last year's budget was $50,959,487. The difference of the major part of that difference was the $2,032,000 of ARP money. We have received that, a million this year, a little over a million this year, a million for next year that's accounted for in the budget. And as you know, as time goes along and we get additional information from the federal government and the state treasurer, we plan to have sessions with you all on what to appropriate those funds for. Since they don't have to be appropriated and spent till 2024, we feel we need to be very strategic in where we're putting those dollars and making sure that we're doing them that effective. The difference then would be about $59,237 between those budgets, once you take the ARP money out. So no one can say that you're on a spin thrift. If anything, you're holding the line pretty tight on this economy that's kind of, as Alderman Mills says, "I'm president" with the different things that have been going on this year and this past year. We have continuation of the park and the water and stormwater projects that you're seeing continue to move forward in the decisions that you made of close to the $12 million of investment and capital that you have allocated. The overhead line conversion is still in there at the $250,000. The design and engineering anticipation of over $6 million for the airport-related grants and moving forward on those projects, $420,000 in asphalt and sidewalk repairs and reconstruction. The electric rate by ordinance in 2022, or 2020, excuse me, was to be raised by 2% for this next year. The water rate at 2.5 and the sewer rate at 5%, both as a result of the studies that you adopted in 2020. The flat or the fleet enterprise fund with the management of the maintenance and the vehicle replacement is in the swing, and you also know that there was monies on the investment side of that that we had to allocate for this next year as well. Someday, when they get the chip back in the vehicles and they're not backordered, we can see that moving forward at a more normal rate. The board has had an extensive discussion over the compensation study for the positions and the staff. As you all know, that it's been close to 17 years since that's been looked at. Currently now, especially in three of our departments that are suffering to be able to attract and retain employees with the police and the fire and the electric department, as well as some of our other departments. And you all implemented the option three with the 0.5% per year service plus increasing that to the minimum. This is still with the, in the budget for next year, the 4% merit performance raises and employees based upon their performance for the end of next year will still be able to receive compensation based upon their performance. The 2021 amended part of this budget is not before you tonight. We're doing that separately probably at the next meeting. But the, just to overview with you all from these amendments, are the general fund increasing by the $227,441 of the money that we rolled over from the 2020 streets. If you all remember, there was not really much asphalt milling overlay that was being done in 2020, and we had to roll those funds over to the 2021 budget. Additional was the debt service increase of $29,940 to recognize the parks' interest payment for this year as well. So both things not major, but that'll be, we need to make sure that we have them in for the year-end amendments, and you'll be seeing that in more detail in the next meeting. So the emergency service, public safety sales tax was a huge impact to this year's budget. You all took that opportunity to put that on the ballot to the voters. We're very appreciative of the voters giving us the vote of confidence for our emergency service, as well as our police department. Everybody looks at emergency services holistically, and I don't think it was just for our EMS, but I also believe it was in a vote of confidence for our officers as well that are, they're indicated in the general fund. So the budget contains those, as well as that $800,000. This would be the first budget, you all get to adopt the first budget where there is no general fund money supplanting that EMS fund. For years, since the beginning, it has been the general fund supporting that service. Up into this last year of over $800,000 to be able to go forward. That made it unobstainable for the general fund to continue to meet that need of the EMS, as well as the parks. The parks payment is coming off for this next year. The last payment will be coming in for that so that we knew that there was an end solution for that. And the EMS solution was the only one we could find, which was to have that sales tax possibility. And so you all in some ways are making history by not having to transfer general fund money to be able to support a needed service within our community. The department has funded the aquatics and the parks fund and the community center fund. We're seeing that the parks department is actually getting to a place of being self-sustaining, and that has been a long time coming, even with the funds that were being transferred. Give a hat off to Grant and the staff over there for continuing to generate revenue. And the decision you made to invest in the community center has seen memberships drive extremely high and people that are talking about it, and as a result, those revenues are paying off. The sales tax revenue has been adjusted to a modest 2% for next year. If you all remember the October report you received, that we're at 12% higher than through October. So basically, as of November 1, we only put 2% in there for this next year. The all other revenue, if you include the sales tax, the property tax, and all other sources that go to the general fund, you're only seeing an increase of 1% to the general fund. And so there's not, again, a major push on spending. As a result of that, the opportunity for the budget to do other things of investment, which is our employees. The employees, as you all made the decision as the greatest asset, to finish up these large COP projects of over $12 million. And by doing that, meeting the demands, if you all recall from the survey that came out, a lot of the things that you all have implemented in this budget, as well as dealing with the trash service issue as you did in the third quarter of this year, was meeting a lot of the different concerns, different complaints within that budget. So we're seeing the additional that the ambulance fund is also getting the G, we call it GMAT, which is GMT, which is opportunity for funding through the federal government on a lot of the different Medicaid. We, as you know, we don't get reimbursed completely from Medicare and Medicaid on a lot of those. And this is a new program that the federal government has put in place to try to help out with those shortfalls. And so again, that's additional funds to be able to make that department and invest and continue in the capital, as well as the employees. So with that, we are looking forward to this next year. We are optimistic. We are being careful. Staff review the financials monthly because we're constantly watching to see how the market is turning and what the market is doing, because it's an unprecedented time. I've received even emails from other boards asking me why the sales tax is where it's at and where, why are the revenues up the way they are? And it's just a litany of things from the pandemic and the people that are ordering. And this year, probably this next month, will be bringing to the board as requested what the user fee is and all of the, the problem, or not the user fee, the user tax. Because, as you know, the chamber has even brought that up to me because the different online personnel or online products that are being sold, and they're not having to pay any sales tax for selling here in Harrisonville. Missouri was one of the last states to give that opportunity. The other concern in that is the legislature has put a 2025 deadline of reducing all cities' franchise fees to 2.5%. So whether you utilize that use tax or not, you're going to see revenues cut come into cities. And there's a whole other things I could say about that, but I don't know what one has to do with the other. But we're going to have to come up with some solutions with that. We, I have been in discussions with the chamber board about that, and several have indicated that they would possibly like to take up that cause to be able to meet the needs of our local businesses. And I thought I would mention that since the mayor had mentioned about our local businesses. That is one of the threats to our local businesses is the undercutting that is being done by the sales tax that these online users are not having to pay. And yet our local businesses are providing jobs, they're sponsoring school events, they're sponsoring different community events, and they're contributing to the community. So with that, Madam Mayor, if there's any questions, take any questions that we have on the budget tonight. But I appreciate the mayor and the board and all of the long and sometimes late nights of hearing a lot of the different needs and different concerns and different numbers along that manner. But I think tonight, as you see, is a good product and the labors of your late nights.
Does the board have questions for Mr. Ratliff? Well, if not, this is the, this is an ordinance, and we're just doing the first reading tonight. We'll bring it back for the second reading at our next meeting, so I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the first reading?
Second.
Have a motion from Alderman Dorhoff with a second from Alderman Zerring. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Zerring.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Milner is excused.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on then to Aldermen and Committee reports. Alderman Davidson.
I have nothing, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Mills.
I just thought it was of interest. We had a twin-prop plane land at the airport yesterday to pick up local.
Barbecue meat?
Barbecue.
Yes, yes.
And onto the Chiefs game in Las Vegas, so our culinary delights were taking part in Vegas. And then I was contacted this week by a contractor about a temporary asphalt plant on the corner there. Apparently, we're overlaying I-49 next year, so getting his bids placed for that. And then I want to thank the city for their position on, you saw in the weekly report, we had two water main breaks. There was another one in the parking lot there at, down from, on the Millwalk end. And in case you don't know, large establishments like that, or the hospital, or southern ones, schools, whenever you see fire hydrants and stuff like that in their parking lots around their property, those are private. The city's obligation ends at the road, the city water main ends at the road. But the city has always cooperated with private business when there's an issue like that with infrastructure. And while we fix it and with, you know, a contractor or whatever, instead of having the fire system, the sprinkler systems down for a day, the city will loan us a piece of pipe or a fitting that we might need locally to get it turned on as quick as possible, and then we pay the city back with the material. And so it's, it's just a wonderful thing that the city does that doesn't delay the project, delay the contractor. It's, and they've always, I bought, had pipe apparently 40 years ago. This is my third or fourth water break on that line, and they've always assisted me in that regard with loaning me, and it's wonderful. I hope they do that with everybody. Anyway, that's all.
Thank you very much. That's a great report. Alderman Turner.
I attended the town hall meeting last Saturday, had a great presenter about the Cassius Center, very informational, the classes they offer, and, I mean, a lot of people don't realize what we have here.
That's right. That's right.
That's it.
Thank you for being there. Alderman Zerring.
Just going to jump on what Alderman Mills said there. I mean, our, our city, the way it works, I think with our businesses, all of that. Definitely our water department's been busy here in the last, well, you know, if it's not water, it's electric. If it's not electric, it's, it's, there's always something, and it, you know, I can't say enough about our workers to get out there and get things going, like you said, as quick as possible and keep things running out here. Even though, if you look on Facebook, it seems like it took them six weeks to do it, but. And we're getting ready to head into the snowy season, so the street department's about to get busy again, too. I think electric stays busy, don't they?
Yes.
Yep, so that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Franklin.
I wanted to thank Brad and Jeremy and Daniel and the department heads for all the work that they have done towards, on behalf of the employees of City Hall and all the long hours that they put in to help these reports and get them to where they need to be so where we can move forward with that. So thank you for all the hard work and everything that you've done, Mayor. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Reese.
Yes, I want to just add a little bit to what Alderman Turner had to say about the meeting, the town hall meeting last Saturday. We didn't have a lot of people there, and it was an incredible meeting. It was just one of those things that you learn more and more about. I told them I've lived in this community for a long time, and every time I go to one of those meetings, I learn something that I didn't know before. I mean, things that are important, you know, and, and so I'm concerned about us not having enough people to get that information. And so Mayor Bowman's come up with what I think is a really, really good idea, and they're going to go ahead and, you know, do you mind saying exactly what?
No, I don't mind at all. You know, that was our 38th town hall meeting since I was first elected as an alderman in 2015. And we always want to bring a topic of interest to the community, and as Alderwoman Reese has stated, so many times, people will say, you know, "I learned something today that I didn't know before. I've lived in this city for years," they will say, "and they still learned something they hadn't heard before." So what we are planning on doing next year, as technology, you know, is improved, we're going to record our town hall meetings and then post them on YouTube and then post them through the city's YouTube channel as well because it is really very important information and valuable for the community to have. And we know that people's schedules are busy, and Saturday mornings are a busy time, but we feel like the information is so important, we want to use all avenues that we can. And in January, we have a nurse educator from Lifeline Eagle coming, and her topic is going to be "Stop the Bleed." You know, they feel that it's important that everyone know how to stop if someone's bleeding. And so that's the January program, and then we'll have other programs throughout the year. So I want to thank Alderman Reese and Alderman Dorhoff and Alderman Turner for coming and supporting that meeting and being there to visit with folks. I know Alderman Mills has been there in the past and other aldermen as well. So thank you, Alderman Reese, for those comments. Anything else from you?
No, thank you.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Well, I don't know what else I can add about the town hall. I do want to, I do want to thank Chief Hofer for helping out with a loose dog issue the other day, and he responded quickly while the animal control officer is out sick. And so he had a lieutenant come with the, with the animal truck and took care of it pretty quickly, so hats off to him.
Excellent. Excellent. Good news. Thank you, Chief Hofer. All right, a report from the city administrator.
Yes, ma'am. CWSS has been sending out information about the flushing that they're going to be doing around town as well, trying to explain what people might see different as a result of it. Some to add to, so you had the water main break at Sycamore and Lexington was about a 20,000, almost 21,000 gallon loss. The one at 720 North Independence was about $129,000 loss of gallons. The thing I would really like to compliment, Matt Carver, who is the head of that group. I've been, Matt's recently been put in that position, and as a result, I've been hearing about him following up with the guys and how we can improve and make sure that we're doing things better. doing things better on these breaks and how we can do them better. And the additional communication that that group is now doing, Jeremy can tell you, as far as the utility department, they've been very excited about the, the greater communication that's coming within that division. So we're thankful for some of the personnel changes that we've had to have there, and we're seeing some great results as a, as a result of that. The wastewater treatment plan has a draft copy of their Missouri State operating permit, and then the airport runway reconstruction project has finished the unmanned aircraft system drone survey of the runway. They were able to make sure to do that, and there was no collisions or any problems in that way. The airport hangar taxi lane project is about ninety percent. MoDOT engineers have a free reimbursement request that's been completed. And then the spillway rehabilitation, the pre-construction conference is scheduled for the eighteenth, and notice to proceed is going to be on December the first. And then the wastewater treatment facility UV project has had the beams installed, and the project is on schedule. The outdoor pool project, the contractor's moving the existing concrete slab, and you all had a photo with some of that to see that moving forward. Congratulations Andy Pollard, he attended the APPA Customer Connections Conference and was appointed the vice chairman for that group. So always good to have staff on these state and national groups be a part of those boards. The Parks and Rec has seen the HVAC units being additionally installed at the community center. Should be fully operational by this Wednesday. And then Culver's Restaurant Project is progressing well. There's going to be a ribbon cutting and VIP access on the twenty-seventh at nine AM. So after that, we should be seeing a lot more activity there at Culver's. The Starbucks Project's continuing to move forward. Plans on the Cass County Health Department relocation is being reviewed, and the permit is ready now for that relocation. Scooter's Coffee Project has applied for a building permit, and the plan review starts on that on the fifteenth. The twenty-ninth new single-family permit has been submit, submitted for, with twenty-seven issued and two already, are ready to be issued. And then we had a, staff had a good call from First Choice Custom Homes that's purchased ten lots in the Glen Eagle subdivision and plans on pulling at least two of those here within the, the quick near future. Staff is still coordinating the projects with the, the master plan. The, we've already had two of them. December first is the, the next one, which is a framework summit with the public open house, then January sixth, and then January the twelfth. I can tell you that we've been getting excellent feedback from a lot of, of different groups. I know Roger said that one, one of the most impressive groups in Gould Evans said was the high school kids, and a lot of the information that they provided and, and gave input on the master plan. If you all don't know, their favorite hangout is Sonic, and that's where they like to go. But they want to, they want to see the downtown square turn into a mall, and you know, as, as far as walkability retail, to be able to walk around where a lot of other places have a mall, they would have the square to be having those type of, of outlets. So anyway, there's just a lot, a lot of good information, a lot of good feedback from a lot of different community members that have been giving feedback, because we're not just having these open houses, we're having those strategic interviews with different groups around the community as well to make sure that we have those. We have an update, a current one coming up with MoDOT in Cass County, then our utility partners, and then the rest of our industrial partners. So we've had a lot of, of good feedback on that. Staff's been working on that CDBG grant for demolition, and you might have heard some people talk about drones flying in around in different areas. That was because it's a part of that free video shoot that we did a contract with, and they did several different shoots. The mayor was a part of some of those shoots as well, and we're looking forward to the rest of that. And then lastly, Roger's in the room tonight, and I'll let you know that Roger, Roger will be leaving us on November the thirtieth to go up the road to work, so we wish Roger the best, and he, between Chris and, and Jim, they'll be kind of helping out until we get someone into that position and in getting that role fulfilled. And with that, Madam Mayor, I think that's all I've got.
Okay.
I feel like I've been talking all night.
Thank you very much.
So do we. You know what they say, you put a crowd in front of a preacher and just keep talking.
Oh, you have the report, the municipal court report in your packet. Questions from the media? Nothing from you, Dennis? All right, well, before we adjourn, I just want to share this newspaper article that the Star, I mean, the Cass Tribune did this past week. I want to brag on our kids. You know, there's an article in here about George Freeze and his accomplishments and what he has, what he has done and how he's brought Harrisonville to the forefront of attention. And then Jace Reynolds, you know, number one Wildcat. If you haven't seen this paper, go pick up a copy, right, Dennis? They're still, they're still available. But I just wanted to take a minute to brag on our kids. You know, when you think about some of the things that these young men have done, it's amazing, and it's just something that the community can be very proud of. So I want to thank the South Cass Tribune for writing the articles and paying attention to our kids, because I think they deserve it. With that, yes, thank you for reminding me. On behalf of the city and the staff and the board, we want to extend our sympathies and condolences to Alderwoman Milner who lost her mother yesterday. That's why she's not with us. We will be, as soon as we know about arrangements, we'll be sending flowers, and we'll let you know when, when those arrangements are in case you want to attend. So with that, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second?
The motion is from Alderman Davidson with a second from Alderman Franklin. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, we are adjourned. We'll reconvene here in five minutes for work session.